Good evening. My name is Kathy Stanley-Galvin, Mayor of the Town of Stoneville. On behalf of the Town Council myself, we'd like to thank each of you for joining us this evening. At this time, please be respectful and silent or cut off your cellphone. At this time, let us stand for the pledge. Byron, will you lead us in prayer, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll ask for Mr. Mayor to approach the table. Mr. Thornton to lead us in prayer, please.
Let's pray. We come to Christ the living bread to sacrifice that we may never hunger or thirst again for what is right. We come to Christ and give us the living water that we may never thirst again. In His name we pray as one more.
At 5:00 PM, Council met and closed session. Discussion was number three, consult with our town attorney. Number five was instruct negotiating agent. And number six was personnel. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from last month? I have a motion from Councilman Thornton, a second?
Second.
Councilman Bennett, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for this afternoon?
With the two additions.
Yes, I'm sorry. And we will be adding number 11, which is a budget amendment, which will be the SCAP bus service. And number 12, and this will be the consideration to add a new police officer along with the consideration for a budget amendment to fund the police officer. At this time, that will be adding number 11 and number 12. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So do.
I have a motion from Councilman Farmer, a second, and Councilman Thornton, all in favor. Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to go ahead and start. We're going to start with the public hearing. And we'll make this as a consideration of the text amendments of the zoning ordinance, and it's chapter 115, 150, I'm sorry, the building regulations, section 1.50, 109, non-residential maintenance code. So at this time, do we have a motion to go into public hearing?
So do.
I have a motion from Farmer, second, and Thornton, all in favor. We're now in public hearing, and this is open for discussion. Do we have any, no public comments? Do we have any further discussion up here? No further discussion?
Senator Mayor, I do want to make note of the recommendation of the project board that they do want to increase the fee that will be associated with this ordinance from 100 to 300. That is my recommendation.
So we have no further discussion. At this time, do we have a motion to come out of public hearing?
So do.
I have a motion from Farmer, second, Shelton, all in favor. Opposed? Now we're out of public hearing. And with that, and going out of public hearing, is the consideration to adopt ordinance 0-2025-03, amending the Town of Stoneville zoning ordinance, chapter 150. And this will be the building regulation, section 1.50, 109, non-residential maintenance code as presented by staff. And we need to have a motion.
I make a motion that we approve, that we adopt ordinance 0-2025-03, amending Town of Stoneville zoning ordinance, chapter 150, building regulation section 150 dot 09, non-residential maintenance code as presented by staff.
So we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Farmer, a second.
Second.
Councilwoman Smith, all in favor. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is new business. First will be the update on the water sewer infrastructure grants, and this will be presented by Mr. Bill Lester with LKC Engineering.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Phil. I hope tonight is just a little bit of reminder, one, a little bit of update on the projects that are ongoing. And four, I'm sure being that started, I left a privacy seat, so I'm just going to cover this, and this is up to you to keep, and maybe thank you later. This is something that's a bit of what I like to call some attention to. So I'm going to start with this very small grant from some cases. It's a summary of all of the infrastructure products that we've had plenty of over the last couple of years, just to go down that list and tell you just a little bit about each one, where we're at, and I'll share a few things and point that out a little bit. The first report, boost a pump station in Highland Avenue, this is to help relieve some pressure problems out there. I know we've talked about that for a few years, this is a grant we received from Southeast Crescent Regional Commission, because a half million dollar grant, we are matching that. We acquired 350,000. It comes from the next grant down the near mark we got from the state budget reserves. And that's going to install a booster pump station over just downstream of the Highland area. What we'll do is we'll boost all the pressure out to that north west side of town. That's been truly going high spot in town that you have. It's really rising a lot above the ground elevation for tanks, as we said. So it's been challenged probably forever with pressures. Half million dollar grant, like I said, batched. We're currently, design is ongoing. If there's one that I would say might be a little behind what we would like to be, it's this. We're a little behind probably mostly because we're going to do is a property purchase. We're looking at buying some property to locate the boost pump. Once we get that, we almost had that nailed down. Once we get that in the end, we've been given permission to survey it, so we're kind of moving forward with that design right now. So that'll be catching up really quickly as we go through that design, file out the property, and then we go through that purchase. So that was good to report how we're really moving on it now, but that was a technical little while to get out of the game. The next project, water system improvements, this is miscellaneous capital approval projects. The K9 water system asset inventory project designated and is funded with that 2.7 million out of the state budget reserves. We are about 90% complete. Expect permits submitted in our next quarter. I think Byron made a late practice and had that initial design meeting with you who has the fine tuning, and we'll get that thing to 100 so we can get submitted. That was going good, it was scheduled. I think that the good part about this was once we can get it moving, it's money that was in Mark and placed at North Carolina OSBM, and then it's placed on hand. So this is one that you have on hand, so we can get things permitted. Properties, easements worked out, we'll be off and running, and those funding issues there, that'll be doing good, it's scheduled. The next one is also a state budget reserve project, and I'm sorry, let me back up. There's a map right here of the miscellaneous improvements, and it might be a little hard to see that yellow highlighting, but it shows you that Matthews Street, Forest, Leslie, and following down the brunt. The idea is to replace some really deteriorated lines in that area. We're also going to be doing some work over on Oaklawn and King, and I think my engineer's been talking to Byron, there's some lines you've got where you might have lines on old deteriorated lines, where there's a good line across the street. We're going to try to include some of that into the final layout as well. But that goes with the one we just finished, the miscellaneous CIP projects. The next project, the US 220 water main extension, I keep calling it US 220, except for all that is 1359. If anybody knows that, I know that, I apologize. That's $2 million we got from NCO SBM, and we're about, well, we're really complete with that design. That design is complete. We have submitted for public water supply and erosion control permits, and I think those are all approved. We have submitted to NCTOT locally. They are on our side, if you will. It is a project because it's going across the controlled access highway of 220. We have to get a blessing from DOT and Rosy. We are still awaiting that. We've been had some back and forth, but we're hopeful for that very soon. And this map is one of the mini sheets in that design set. That's kind of gives you an idea of where it's located, going across 220 there. And what we're doing is right near the tank, up near the intersection of the highway to Alphabell. We're going to go down and try to go across the road. We're going to have to have some receiving hits between the ramp and 220 because of the tremendous grade changes across there to keep it being 27 feet deep. So like I said, I think we are very close to getting NCTOT approval there and have all of our other approvals. We have held off seeking the easements until we thought DOT was okay, and I think we're just now getting started with the survey required to do the easement plans, but I think we can move forward. We did talk to that concrete owner prior to surveying, and we have hopes that there's not going to be any issues there. The last two projects are, if you remember me last time, talking about the stormwater system, AIA, and the wastewater system, AIA. These are asset inventory assessment projects. This is projects where we go out and assess different things in town. Both of them were competitively applied for and secured through the local department by quality, and I would say that they are ongoing, on time, but probably just not producing a lot of product yet. What we've done in both of them at different levels is we've been doing a lot of the survey work for mapping, and a lot of the field inspections, construction. I brought some samples of that for both of them. I'm kind of talking about both of them from a field inspection standpoint. And this right here in very high of the four sheet, kind of show you what we do with our inspection. This is kind of geocoded, so it'll be tied to your map when we're done. When we're done with your mapping, all of these inspection reports that tie to any asset, whether it's a manhole, drop box, a piece of pipe, it will connect back into the mapping program so that you can reference that. But that's what we've done, and I want to just kind of give you the examples, where our personnel do is they fill one of those out for every asset. And so far, with the stormwater system, I think they've done field inspections of over 70, like inlet boxes, storm manholes, and inspected lines, culverts, and numerous other things. The next thing we're going to be doing is starting to take a look at efficiencies and tying that map together. And maybe just as a reminder, the stormwater doesn't cover every single culprit in town. It's kind of a focused area for most part of this area, down through the school property, down behind, probably so into the ditch network that parallels Church Street until it leaves town on the south end. So that's been the focus. We will have some comments about other ditch networks that leave town because we have kind of walked those and looked at them. We've got some erosion in some areas we'd like to at least point out in case that, have that in the plan in case we're able to take this forward and go after funding in the future. On the wastewater side, we're developing a rate map that Byron and his folks are going to be able to use. They'll have all of your manholes, lines documented, size, things, condition, what they call high priority lines, or lines where you've got aerial crossings of creeks and different things that's required by DDQ. We'll have all of that on the map. All of that is things that are required by DDQ that Byron has to keep up with and is in the collection system permanent, something that you have to update on an ongoing basis. But in addition to that, I think we started, we started this right after Byron got here, you had some other folks through another grant do a rate study. So we took it out of hours and put a little more on mapping. And what we did was we actually served, not just located manholes, but we hit rim elevations and inwards. So we literally have the way the network layout, if somebody came to us, this map's done, you can be able to tell the elevation between two manholes if you needed to, if somebody's trying to connect, you know, somewhere along the lines. It's going to be really kind of neat, far ahead of, you know, supposed to be neighbors, but a lot of folks are getting into this. But it's really good to not just have the layout, you know, the 2D, but you're going to be able to have all the elevations as well. That mapping is ongoing and nearing complete. There's a fine tuning that goes with all of that. All this, all these projects total up to the 5 million, 650,000. It's a lot of great things, I think, the work up top with the booster pump station, the miscellaneous CIP improvements, the line across 220. There are things we designated in the past, you know, is either need through deterioration, future development, things like that. And I think that the fact that we completed previous asset inventory projects, we developed capital improvement plans, we had these in there, and we're able to push those forward when money was available to show that we had the need. So that's been good, and I think we'll do the same thing when we complete the stormwater study and the wastewater study, we'll have updated information for that for future grant programs. A good example right now is NCTQ has an ongoing program for water and sewer. Right now, the stormwater doesn't have much in it, but one day that'll come back too as money allows it. And when that does, we'll be ready when this is completed to seek that. I don't really have anything else to say. The front sheet, the really good summer sheet except Bill's bring that and speak up, 135 there. I do hate.
I think it's supposed to be 770, isn't it?
Oh, 770. I said 135. At least I got the seven.
Yep, you got it right.
I can't get anything right right now. I want to point out, in the middle of that front sheet, the manhole on the left, the two pictures in the middle, the manhole on the left and the manhole on the right, are a couple of different manholes inspected. The one on the left is, the ones you have like that, they'll be recommended for improvement. You've got a lot.
Probably from the 1920s, right?
Right. And the one on the right is kind of what they're supposed to look like if they were not coded or anything yet, but that's a new one that's just gone in. I've carried this little photo of the work that Mark put together with the meters out front. That shows you all the different meters that you've gone through over the years, and it's a good reminder that you've gone through that, you take those out, you got your new meters just in, and that's something great you've done over the years as well. I felt like I was talking fast. I thought all the way up here, I was probably going to try to cover too much. Any questions?
I just have a comment, and I appreciate what you do, Mr. Lester. I've been on the board about 12 years, and you've been here every step of the way, and I hear out, you hear out in the community sometimes, there's nothing going on. This project's been going on for about two years, and a lot of times when you get $6 million, that's exactly what we got, almost $6 million. You've got to plan projects, you've got to do design, and then you've got to get permits, and the permit sometime can take as long as the project does because we're relying on DOT and all the state regulations that have to be met. And probably within the next six to 12 months, then you'll start seeing the construction take place. And I know since I've been on this board, we have been working on trying to replace water pipes and sewer pipes in this town, and because at one time that was our greatest need and probably the biggest problems that we had. So we started working on that. And then this budget year, we also, another thing that we've started working on is road improvement. We budgeted $500,000 of road improvement that hopefully is going to take place by June 30th of 2026. So we've got some roads that we're going to start working on, and as far as roadways are concerned, when it gets cold, you can't pour asphalt, so we have to wait until probably the spring and the summer, and hopefully we'll get all that done. So people say there's not a whole lot getting done. There's a lot getting done. It's just a process, and I worked in government 40 years, and then I've served on the council for about 12. Government's pretty slow, I can just tell you that right now, but the town is working toward making improvements for its citizens. I'm going to be going off the council in two months. I know these folks up here are going to do a great job continuing to make the town great, and the folks that we've got running, hopefully the ones that are elected will continue to work with everybody to do that. But it's everybody working together for a common goal, and I think what this council does is try to do things like this to get these grants. This is $6 million almost that the city didn't have to find funds to get out of the general fund and things like that. So this is grant dollars that staff and Mr. Lester worked on getting that allows us to make improvements for our town, and then leaves us some dollars to do the additional things that we need to do to make this town a better place. So, Mr. Lester, thank you, and I appreciate all you've done since I've been on the council. I know you've been doing this for the town for 20-plus years or longer, and again, thank you very much.
No place I'd rather be doing it, even though I can't get some of the road there. You take it like you're rushing.
Lester, yeah. We've had quite a few residents that have complained about stormwater drain and runoff. So how big an issue is this with the town? And I mean, you were talking about how it meanders through town and gets down ultimately toward Church Street, which we just had one complain a month ago about that. So where's all this water going? Where's going? I don't even know if we have a name for that string, but the one that leaves south along Church Street, I think is unnamed, and it will eventually get back to strings that will get to the river. But yes, there's problems. I'll start with saying everybody's got them. What we're realizing, I know development sometimes takes a little bit of a hit with that, and that's a little true, you know, growth has a little bit of a price, but the bigger thing is we're experiencing, in our world, we design structures, you know, whether it's pipes or whatever. We design those structures for storms, like I've heard people talk about 10-year storms, 100-year storms. People don't design for 100-year storms, they design for 10 and 25-year storms, and the problem, and you really can't afford to do that sometimes, but to think if you're going to try to go beyond that, you'll just never be able to afford it. But the problem is we're seeing storms that are 50 and 100-year storms regularly, and those are percentage changes. It doesn't mean there's one coming every 100 years, but that's the problem, and I think we see that a lot today, and I think residents are more concerned because we're seeing those heavier events, and what they do is they cause that problem more often, especially if the ground's saturated. So yes, we see those, but erosion, you know, when you get more of those events, it erodes those ditches and waterways. We have one, I think, Forest Matthews, where it kind of parallels Brown and out of town. I think that one's extremely eroded, but it's in the middle of nowhere. If you want to go walk in that outfall sometimes, you know, we need to protect it for the sewer system that runs parallel to it. So there's reasons to protect it even when there's no property, really, like housing or other type of property potential for loss. But I've looked at some of the other problems, and I think that higher intensity, higher frequency is a problem. It brings it to our attention forefront. I probably go look at drainage problems everywhere I work across the state, and you can feel that that is coming up more and more. We do have some problems. This was a Eugene thing, but I'll tell you, a lot of these are private property, and that in itself makes it a problem. We are studying these problems here so that we can designate and look at grants in the future, because what most towns don't have the ability to do is to own private property unless they have these months and right of way. But they also don't have that tight funding. You have a water sewer fund, so you can have water sewer rates to go out and raise those to maybe make some improvements, but nobody has, most people don't have stormwater funds. You can develop one, but that's how you would generate funds to start getting into or off of right of way, develop right of ways to do things like that. That's a big leap to go over that private property and do anything like that. It's there, and what we will do in this project is look at that route. I mean, that's where a lot of our problems and I think complaints have come, open years in that pathway. And you'll see that we can put some numbers to what it would take to pass 25-year storms and things like that. You'll also see, not fast forwarded to the final report, that there could be very expensive solutions, and we'll need grant money to be able to address that. Thank you. That was too much. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank y'all very much, as always, and I'm going to slide like you're sitting in a wheelchair.
Next is the consideration of bid proposals for the annual leaf collection.
Yes, Council, we have, we received two bids for the collection of the leaves beginning November 1 through the end of December, one from Treadway Lawn Care out of Eden, and the second being from Ray Harris Lawn Care out of Eden as well. And so I present to you those bids tonight.
And they're in the packets?
Yes, your bids are in the packets for consideration.
And who do we presently use right now?
Presently, you are utilizing Treadway Lawn Care.
And we've used them for 100 years.
Six, five, six? Is it six?
And have we had any issues, anything with these for a particular use?
Not that I've been made aware of, no, sir.
We've never?
No.
We've never used them in the past, anything, or if they ever? This is the first time if we get that route, the Treadway, you know, because it has its problems, he's always come back and taken care of the issues that might have. Well, that's what I'm saying, is we've used somebody for six years, we know what we're getting with that. We know what kind of equipment we've got. And your equipment is all up to date and everything that you've done in the past?
I'll make a motion that we approve Treadway.
I'll say it's called Lawn Care.
Treadway Lawn Care for the 2025 leaf collection.
So it's usually, is it usually a three-year contract?
Is this a three-year contract?
It is, correct.
Three-year contract as presented.
So we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Farmer. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I got some. So can we discuss the difference in the pricing?
Sure.
The public deserve to know. So what's Treadway's price?
It's 10,000.
Yeah, I know what it is. What is it?
10,029,63.
Well, year one would be 9,785 for year one.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
9,785 was the proposal for this current year.
Okay, and what's Harris?
7,800.
This is going to run through December 31? Is that correct?
Well, the time period of collection every year would be November through December.
Yeah.
The only thing that I will mention that I remember is that several years back, the council did go with a lower bid, and those people did not complete the job like they were supposed to, and I think we had to call, from what I understand, we had to call Mr. Treadway and come in and finish that particular season out because some improper equipment that the other folks have, so.
That was when it was Mr., it was Robbie Wilson, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure. But I do think sometimes when you know what you have, they're dependable, and they get the job done, that's why I make the motion to go with the existing firm that we have.
Any further discussion? So all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a second? Yes, so we had a motion from.
I made a motion.
And a second. Okay. Yes. Next is a consideration of proposals for the road paving project.
Yes, Council, we had multiple paving companies contact Mr. Curry about the paving project that we had posted, and I'll allow him to come forward if he wants to speak on those behalf. I will make note that we had some requirements within each one of the proposals. I will say that all of them are missing some of the information in that we asked for specific references, but in speaking with Byron, he has stated that he could get those if necessary, but that he did have some contact with the recommended. could get those if necessary, but that he did have some contact with the recommended contractor that he is recommending for tonight.
So, we did have three bids. I am recommending we go with the longest bid, which is wall asphalt. They came in pretty much at the price point we were expecting, three hundred and sixty-six thousand and change. The other two were significant when I, I do have some previous dealings with Wall. They've always done a good job for Eden and fast. I see no reason why they wouldn't be, you know, as good here. So, that, what we're going to bid down is what we're going to call a milling field. So, the streets will actually be milled down, and then a two-inch, we're going to buy fresh asphalt, new asphalt, as written in the RFP, any valve boxes, solids, storm drains, you know, everything will have to be put back at their level, at their range level. So, pretty much everybody that I spoke to said what we are this spring, all those projects could start, and we will try to work around the school schedule as best as we can to not impede them no more than we have to. But, you know, maybe we can do it on a vacation break, or maybe on Saturday or, that's something we have to work out later on down at line. But I think that the section of town that we're talking about, the amount of work that has to be done, is pretty much best place we can start. You must bank all of it, citizens.
I have a few questions. Byron, when you talk with these folks, can you take, can you get possession of those millings? And what would be good is if you can put those down there at the new Public Works parking lot if you need to, because the millings, if you go in there and then you roll them, it's almost like a road, too. So, that's better than just putting gravel in it.
We require them.
So, you.
Everything that we can.
That's a great thing. And I guess my thing, so, this is going to leave you a surplus of about sixty thousand dollars, I think, because I think really more than that, almost a hundred thousand, because we budgeted, we got a cushion. But what I'm saying, if we've got money left over, when we see where we're at, we may, if we've got another road while they're already here that we can get, jump them on, then you can bring something back to the council and let them approve that. So, let's use that five hundred thousand dollars to the best of the town's ability.
This sixty-six does not include the forty-one-five with the parking lot adjacent to the post office. That's a whole separate thing.
Okay.
That was bid separate.
Okay. But still, you got fifty thousand dollars to play with, so that's good.
If we can find a place to use it, that's exactly what we're going to do.
Yeah. Well, I'll make a motion that we take staff recommendation and award the bid for the paving to Walk.
Walk.
Walk?
W A U D A.
Walk, however you pronounce that, I'm not sure. Walk, yeah. That's what I make the bid for.
So, I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Farmer. Do we have a second?
Say.
Councilman Thornton, any further discussion?
One thing, just make sure when they go in and they're rolling it, that we don't damage any other utilities, because the utilities in them areas, I don't know what condition they're in, but you can get in there and vibrate and then.
Well, that's why I made the stipulation, did any of the valve boxes, any of the, you know, sanitary solids, anything we have to go around, they will all be at their labor costs, not ours.
All right. I just want to make sure we're not damaging any of the lines either, you know, gold lines and that thing. So, it may not have to vibrate, you know what I mean?
I got you. All in favor?
Uh.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I just want to say something. I want to thank staff and Byron. We've been talking about roads for twelve years, I know. So, I'm glad, I think we've paved maybe two roads in the twelve years that I've been on the council. We did Lemon Street, and I think there was another one that we paved other than what DOT is doing, which they're responsible for doing, seven seventy and the two, business two-twenty. So, I think this is something that's good for the town, and it's something that the citizens can see, so hopefully they'll appreciate it. So, thank you.
When do you think the parking lot appear will be paid, that you were just?
I called him yesterday morning, and he's buttoning up a couple of other smaller projects. I'm hoping to have it done before the tree lighting starts.
So, the weather, that's not going, doesn't do anything with doing that parking lot? The temperature, I mean?
As long as we get before it gets too, too cold, we'll be fine. A small project like that.
I got you. Thank you. Thank y'all for what you did. Truly appreciate you.
And I do want to make the council aware, when I did a school tour, the conversation did come up, just so that we have kept the school system in the loop about the potential effects on their traffic pattern. Superintendent was there, as well as the gentleman who's over there at facility. So, I just want to make you aware that we have had that conversation, and so they'll be reaching out once we get closer to the date that we plan to start paving.
And I know, Mr. Russell, you shut me up so I can, but the traffic pattern right now, if you come out here at two-thirty, it's terrible right now. You could pave the whole town, and I don't know if it can get much worse than it is right now. It's pretty bad, so I don't know what needs to, I think the chief and folks need to sit down and make to figure out a different pattern, because I mean, people, you can't even, somebody's going to have a serious wreck there at Church Street and seven seventy right there, because the people on seven seventy, I try to slow down, but some of these people, they just go right by you, and they don't know what's coming out, what's coming your way. So, that's something I think that we need to, that's a public safety concern that needs to be looked at, I think.
It's been addressed a couple of times when Chief Moore was here, because it went down by Charlie Soap, and then Charlie Soap had us move it.
Yeah.
I can tell you this, I'm going to go off subject, but I'm not, but I am. We are this close to getting a school down here. We need to be a voice down here. If we get that school down here, the whole traffic pattern will change. We have been discussions and heard many meetings where they will move that school around, and it would be, those kids would be safe.
Well, I think we're supposed to be.
They have got to hear our voice, though.
I think it's going to happen, but I would, I think we need, for the safety of our folks right now, because the school, even if they approve, is probably five years out longer. We need to get Charlie Soap into discussions and figure out whatever pattern we need, because I think part of the paving contract is paving down there, that area down there. So, if we're doing, it's our road, so we have the ability to utilize that road. So, we own the road, or we maintain the road, so we make the say on what we do, not Charlie Soap. And I probably shouldn't say that, but, you know, the safety of our school kids and our residents, it should be our top priority all the time. So, somebody needs some work to try to figure out what we can do on that, so.
And we'll, I'll get with Chief Dixon about that and see if we can.
But it is, it's a concern.
Next is a consideration of the salary review for Public Works technician.
So, this item was one that was discussed in closed session regarding, it basically is due to the fact that we made an adjustment in its salary schedule, and by doing so, in essence, we left one of our employees behind. So, our goal is to move that employee forward based on his evaluation.
So, do we have a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion that we do the salary adjustment, and I think, as you said, Mr. Hell Manager, it was due, because when we redid the pay range, he actually dropped all this pay grade instead of being moved up, and this just kind of puts him in line where he needs to be now. So, I have no problem with that. So, I make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation.
So, we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Farmer. Second. Second, Councilwoman Smith, any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is a consideration of Resolution R dash two oh two five dash one three, approving financing for the purchase of two police vehicles through the Fidelity Bank and all the relevant necessary budget amendments.
So, yes, this resolution is just part of the paperwork. After doing some investigation, because of the town being on the UAL list, we are required by law and statute that we have to go before the local government commission before we can even apply for a loan. So, as part of that, we had to have a resolution in place indicating that we had solved out the finance terms of the loan and what it would look like for the town. And so, this, basically, this resolution is simply to recognize that fact and accept that as the best financing term sheet and details that we can have for this particular loan. This does not guarantee that we can go ahead and apply, so I just want to make that, we have to submit this to the LGC. We have to go to the LGC in November, and then they make their determination whether they will allow the town to actually apply for the loan or not. So, this is, this is just one step in the process.
Well, based on that information, I make a motion that we approve consideration of Resolution R dash two zero two five dash one three.
We have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Smith. A second?
Say.
Councilman Thornton, any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is a consideration to amend the personal policy, and this is the addition of Section thirty-two dash three oh three zero, by hiring procedures and required background checks upon conditional offer.
Personal policy is basically required, effective October one, we are required to put language in our background checks, et cetera, for any individual that is in contact with youth, and as a result of that, we've made the adjustments. There is a little bit of clarification of some additional language in the policy, that same section per Mr. Russell's recommendation. It basically says the same thing, but we just changed the language. The primary change, or the main change in this, is that now there are specific detailed background requirements for those working with children.
I make a motion that we approve the changes as recommended by staff.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Farmer. A second?
Say.
Councilman Sheldon, any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is a consideration or review of the consensatory, I messed it up, for time, yeah, consensatory time for exempt employee inspection thirty-two dash oh eight one overtime policy.
So, Council, just want to make you aware, item seven and number eight go together, but item seven talks about exempt employees. Per a couple of council members' requests, I know back in March, some determination was made because of the police department not being fully staffed at that time, that they would allow Police Chief to her in excess of what the policy currently recommended, because she is the only, other than myself, she's the only exempt employee. So, at that time, the unit acknowledged she was filling in in places where there weren't needs of officers. And so, this is basically, that first section is simply to review that. I know at some point, it was stated that it was the understanding that this was to be a temporary consideration over the case, and that this time you wanted to review that piece of that. Do we want to discuss that portion of it before moving on to the, okay, so, I would just like to go ahead and, I think you're fully capable of, of just in your time, actually, where we need to now, since we're over that particular time period, whatever you have on the books now, you take off, but you will not be able to get any more other than the forty that you have now. So, I think we revert the policy back to what it was. That was the understanding for that, is that when the department became fully staffed, that we would come back and make those adjustments. And I think she is at the place where we can, we can do that now.
Let me ask a question. Is that, I'm not clear on what this is asking.
So, item number one, simply, I think it was a point of review, because back in March, it was understood that this would be almost a temporary fix, but to the extent how long that fix was wanting to last, is just to review that piece of it. At this point in time, I think what we're asking for, if we do revert back to the forty-hour limit, that we still give the chief a grace period to be able to utilize for time.
Whatever, she's right. She would take that off, but she would not have anything to do.
So, that really, so, the first part of this is not a change per se in what's already there. It's just the case by case. It's now up for review.
But I do think we need to revert it back. I don't think it's up to review. It's up for review.
Right.
And the review is that we're in, we're able to revert back to the way the comp time should be, to be the forty hours instead of what we have anticipated to do. That's what I think needs to happen.
So, my question is, if we do that, then every time we have this issue, we got to come back and discuss that again?
It should be that way, yes, ma'am.
So, you're saying we cannot make a policy that addresses this under certain terms?
You can do anything you want to, but that's going to be very seldom, should be very seldom, that we're in a position where you have to give that additional comp time to your department heads. Hopefully, there should be some type of, when someone leaves, if you're fully staffed, that person's not going to be, that person would not need to come in and work those additional.
You said it should be, but aren't we a stomach?
Well, every, I'll just assume that every government agency in the country pretty much assumes that they're going to give their exempt employees about forty hours of time. That's what most people get. Most people don't do the additional hours that we did, but I was part of voting to do that, because I knew that we needed that at the time, but.
I think you answered my question. My only question is, if this puts any person, not only the chief, any person, in this predicament again, instead of us having to come back and go through all of this again, couldn't we have the policy to address it ahead of time, so that we know what we are going to allow with strict, strict rules? That's what I'm asking.
You've got a strict rule in there that states that once someone goes over that, it has to be approved by the council. That would be fine, but right now, if you just do, open it up where it's up to that hundred, do whatever, we might not ever sit again. We've had situations like that happen. I just, we just need to make sure that, I'm not going to be, but this council needs to make sure that hopefully we don't have anybody who will take advantage of the situation, but that does occur, we just need to make sure that we have checks and balances to make sure that's not happening. That's just my opinion, but like I've said a million times, I'm one boat ended up. The council can choose to do what they would like to do.
I'd like to hear other input, but nobody seems to have any.
And if you want to table it, you can table. Once you table it till December, and that one, I won't be here to make it happen.
I will speak on behalf of the other exempt employee. I have exceeded sixty hours, and I've worked to get those down. And so, I understood with the question at that point, I have capped at forty, and I understand that. I'm still willing to do my job, because I know that's what, there's times that I feel like in town hall that I need to be there, whether I've got the extra hours or not, and so I'm going to be there. So, I just, there would be a point of consideration is that there be a little bit of flexibility in that, that whether it be the direct supervisor says, okay, she comes to me and says, okay, I've got to work these hours. It's going to put me over the forty. Are you okay with that, or do we need to go for council?
But the only thing I'll say, I was a department head for almost forty years, and I never got anything above, I never got anything until I came to North Carolina, to the city of Eden, getting there, department head sixty hours. In reality, the town, the city doesn't even have to, the town doesn't even have to give you the forty hours that we're given, because when you're an exempt employee, if it takes seventy-five hours to do the job, that's what it takes to do the job, and you're not, you shouldn't be expected to be paid for it. But the town's already giving you that forty, which we're not required to do so anyhow. But, you know, like I said, it's up to the council.
And that's great, and I completely agree. I mean, as an educator, that's why we were, we knew, we're twenty-four-seven, whatever it took for us.
Whatever you needed to do, right.
So, I appreciate that you're considering this as an option and providing at least the forty hours.
Yeah, well, I think the forty hours stay. That definitely stays.
With that said, I would like to table this, so we can have more discussion, so I can have a better understanding. And I really feel like we can put a policy in place, because when you make policies, you make policies knowing your people are honest. you make policies knowing your people are honest, not thinking your people are not honest. So I'd like us to discuss it further and make a decision, if that's okay.
Okay with the council? Will we table it?
I guess you make a motion technically.
Yes. So we have a motion from Councilwoman Smith to table this until November. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilwoman Thornton. All in favor? Opposed? So we table it. Thank you, Daisy. Next is a consideration to amend the personnel policy, section 32-081 overtime policy. And this is a compensation of a non-exempt police officer.
So currently, the way that the policy is written and the way state required it to be written up until a couple of months ago was that in order for police officers to not earn, but in terms of the compensation rate to be at overtime rate, they had to exceed 171 hours across a 28-day period. They have since revised that to allow each town to make that. So the proposal has been placed out there, is that we would like to go to the two-week time period looking at, so that it's basically being kept up with at the same rate as everyone else, because everyone else is paid every two weeks versus the police officers being every four. So there was a lot of paperwork that was having to be kept to ensure that those employees were being paid at the correct rate across the entire month. So this was simply simplify that for the payroll, and I think it also acknowledges that if an officer works 90-plus hours in one week, and then the next week takes, or next two weeks takes a day off, that could potentially knock them out of the additional overtime pay, whereas this would adjust that. So that week two, one and two, they're getting paid at that rate plus the time and a half of the extra overtime. And then the next week, they're paid according to what they've actually worked. So they're being paid for what they're working versus looking at a month at a time. I hope I made it as clear as I can.
I think you just simplified things for-
Correct.
So I'll make a motion that we approve that policy as submitted by staff.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Farmer.
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Smith. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next is a consideration to adopt ordinance 02025-04, amended to town of Stonewall code ordinance is chapter 31, Clarkson Recreation Advisory Board, the manager to administrator in section 31.08A, and that would be eight, eight, I'm sorry, A, membership from six members to eight members.
Yes, council, right now, as stated, the, there's simply a reference to town manager versus town administrator, so that is more of a tax correction there. But discussion there, they asked that the two alternates that are currently being named be made permanent or full-time members, so that instead of being the six members, it is simply eight. And that is recommendation of that advisory council by consensus.
You want to make that motion, Mr. Thornton? I see it's your chair. I make a motion, we approve that. I don't know where the numbers are. Number nine. You talking about on the agenda?
On the agenda, yeah.
I'm looking at the actual policy there. Orderment 0-2025-04, outline of Clarkson Recreation Advisory Board.
So we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Thornton. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second was Councilman Sheldon. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the update from the cabinet officer, Ms. Mary Ann Greer, and she is going to be discussing software audit and reporting.
Okay, so since I've been here, we are in the process of switching software from QuickBooks to Southern Software. And the thing, the difference is QuickBooks is not really built for funding accounting and for governmental accounting. Southern Software is. And it is a big change of actually the work to go into, getting it all loaded. I've gotten all of the charter councils loaded, I've gotten the balances, and I've gotten the budget loaded. So now we can actually see budget to actual. So all of that is in there now, and so it'll show things a lot easier. I think it'll be things that you can see quicker. And it, we were able, I was able to go ahead and set up all the new funds for all the water source projects that we've got going on. So I've set up four different funds because we have four projects. So those have been set up as special projects, which is different because you can't do a special project in QuickBooks. We're able to do that because these projects will last several years. So that's, that's been done. The auditor came in, he was in here last week for two days. He went over everything that he needed. There may be things that he'll call me a need, but originally, you had to have your audit done by October 31st. State has changed that to December 31st. I mean, 31st, so maybe we can see something early November, but there's a software thing that the state has to do that they have not uploaded yet, so he cannot put the information in to report it to the state. So he, as soon as they upload that, he'll be able to report it to the state, and then he'll be able to come back and give us his findings. And then the last thing, like I said, the reporting will be a lot better. And the process of finishing up, so putting in all the new information, doing some things like that, once all that is done, then I'll be able to be sure and more confident with the numbers that we have on hand, to be able to give those to you so you can see your budget versus actual.
And if I may, it's up to the council, but for the finance director to be to bring her laptop, I know you have to do something, and she has the ability, if the council has a question about a line item, she's able to give that to us right then and there, because for years and years and years, we were able to get that, and the last couple of years, we were told we couldn't get it.
Wouldn't you have to be linked?
We are working with VC3. It's been asked multiple times, help me out, delay the language, but basically, where they can remote in with our computer from this site. At this point in time, VC3 still has not established that for us, but we're working with them to try to get that. And that would allow her the ability to bring a laptop here and be able to pull up her desktop from the office and be able to give you exactly-
She could do that, I think it would be very beneficial to the council as well as to the board, because it is just great to have that information, because we don't have it. If she's got it, she can provide that to us.
Right now, we don't have laptops, so that's something we have to be able to do that.
Well, I have all the laptops that we used to have.
The ones that I've stayed in the office are very aged, yes.
Okay.
But as soon as we get that.
But even if you just make one for the finance staff, for your case meetings or something, you know, I don't know, it's not going to benefit me, but I think it would benefit Mr. Ben's, like, I mean, he has questions about the numbers and terms, and it would be good if we could get those.
But yeah, in the office, we've had that discussion about getting both, Gloria and Mary Ann, the laptop, in addition to, and again, I can't remember what the term is, but anyway, basically, this secure, so that they can log in from here securely and be able to access their desktop. So we're working on both of those items.
Next is number 11, a budget amendment, and this is for the SCAP service.
So we bring this to your attention for, in looking at when we were budgeting, creating budget for this current fiscal year, in looking back three years, we found no evidence that we had budgeted for the SCAP program. However, I received on Monday, I received an invoice from them stating that we had an annual commitment of $4,000, $1,000 per quarter. In doing some research, the three years in which we did not budgeted anything was because of the COVID funding, and they had used federal grants to cover the total cost versus being a portion of the cost. So going back far enough, we did discuss, in the past, it was much higher than it is now. When we looked at those numbers, it was kind of amazed at the difference. I mean, we're talking about $15,000, $20,000 a quarter, whereas now we're looking at $1,000 a quarter. So this amendment is simply to address that invoice that was missed. I will tell you that when we went to do the research, it went all the way back to November prior to when Ms. Halloran, here, she did have an email where she had, I will say consented to this, but basically acknowledged that this was an invoice that the town would owe come July 1. And so anyway, this amendment is simply to address that and move the $4,000 to the appropriate fund so we can pay the invoices.
I can tell you that in the past, it was too SCAP, the system, the money was more, and then they have found out, but they usually, now they only keep, they have to part here, but they only keep one in use, and it's probably a lot cheaper now than it was before.
And again, they do keep, apparently keep, they don't, how many is riding from Stonewall versus the other municipalities in the county? So it's based on ridership count over the last couple of years.
Exactly.
I make a motion that we, this budget amendment, SCAP, plus $4,000.
I'll second.
Very good. So we have a motion from Councilwoman Farmer, a second from Councilwoman Smith. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next is our number 12, and this is a consideration to add a police officer. Also with that saying, it would be consideration for a budget amendment to fund the police officer.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the town administrator to proceed with hiring a judicial police officer, and pay $45,000 for the fund balance.
And I think it needs to be noted that the $45,000 is because of the time we used-
It's probably about six months instead of, I think the total price for the officers is roughly around $66,000.
With all benefits and everything.
And the whole thing I'll say is that the police department is, I think they're doing a really good job. I think since we hired Mrs. Nixon, we've seen a lot of things happening, and I think the officer will allow us to continue to do those things and make sure that our officers are safe as well as our people are safe.
So we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a lot of seconds. So we have one from Councilwoman Smith. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Next, there is no old business. Do we have anyone set up for public comments? Set up for public comments? Town administrator report?
Just a couple of items for the benefit of the council as well as community members. A lot 2540 is planning an event on October 25th. They have been in communication with us regarding this event. There will be minimal disruption in traffic, but there might be a section of, but that is October 25th. Just want to remind everybody, they trick or treat downtown October 31st from 2:00 to 4:00. Real quick update, the bank building is on track for completion, and Colleen did have a successful day today. As of 4:30, she said they had opened 27 new accounts, with still a couple that was in the midst of doing that, and they still had a couple of hours. So that was good that we had the community support there. And then one thing, we were, well, I was approached by a gentleman by the name of Bill Stone. He is the grandson of Robert Tyler Stone, and he had a portrait of this gentleman. And after doing some research and talking with Bill Knight, this gentleman actually served at one point in time as one of the mayors for Stonewall. So he is in work to probably donate that to the town, so that will allow us to add additional photos here. Interestingly enough, he is also was the first president of the Bank of Stonewall. So those two pieces of historical wall of portraits that we have here in town, in the council chambers.
Mr. Town Administrator?
Yes, sir.
What is the completion date for that?
So the agreement was November 18th, and Mr. Dawson has indicated he feels like he will be finished well before then. So we're probably-
Do we know a claim? Do we have any?
In discussion with her senior vice president, she said that there may be, if he gets done early enough in November, that they may do a soft opening for December, and then do the official grand opening in January to steal.
So we're looking at January, where it happened?
To have a grand, yes. But we, it is highly likely, based on the way we're looking with schedules, that barring that he doesn't have any other problem with construction, that it could be that they'll be in their building by December.
And I would just like, and like I said, about one person, I think the city mayor, their pictures should be on the wall, on the walls. I think something may happen where they may not ever get to see their pictures. So I would like, like for them to see that. I'm just glad it would be appropriate to have the city mayors, their night meeting. But I just, for the little amount that the mayor makes and the council members make, I just, I know we got some folks that's running for office too, that's out there. For y'all's record, I think the council members, we get a whopping $100 per month, whether you make it once a month, and sometimes we've been known to make 10 times a month. So you get the $100, and I think the mayor gets what?
Actually, $103.
She gets $103. So you don't do it for the money, you do it because you care about the town. I think that's the least that we can do if everybody's in pain. I think I said it when we talked on the phone, but I'd like for us to consider that.
I'd like to get to see it.
Yeah, and, but again, I would thank everybody that's running for office, and good luck to everybody. Now, this is the last meeting before the election, so I know I shouldn't talk to them. Thank you for taking the time to serve the town of Stonewall, and I just want to wish all the folks to run and good luck, and just remember that you're doing it for the people. You know, you're not doing it for anything but trying to make the town a better place.
I agree with Johnny. Thank y'all for doing it. It's very a service of the town, and anybody that has the courage and to be able to do it. It says a lot about that. It's, it can be some of the most difficult things or some of the best things. And with that said, I want to thank all the department heads by all means. I truly thank you for what you do. Every time I go out, I appreciate you. Same way with you, Joel. Appreciate you, Becky. And I appreciate Michael, and today's his special day. Today happened, so big Michael's birthday, so. Michael, we appreciate what-
I'll say it's one of the days for you to birthday, right?
Good. You stepped up and took the ground running, you do a great job. Gloria, you do too. City and Mary Ann. I told Michael today, we're in a, we're in a really good place. So I can't say it enough as a person, when y'all do what y'all doing, and y'all doing it, it makes my life a lot easier. So I truly, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you, and I'm sure these other guys up there, and Daisy, thank you for what we do. So at that time, do we have a motion to adjourn? Our next meeting will be on Thursday, November 6. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
I have just one more thing. While we were talking about these photos, I agree with Johnny, but there was a guy, Joe Paterno, had a statue of him outside Penn State, and they had it done, but they got it torn down. But what's the deal with the library and some of the photos that was in there? I think it was Mr. Stone that was hanging on the wall in there, Mrs. Belton, who donated money for the monument, Dr. Falk, who was our resident physician for 40 or 50 years. But, you know, we gave the county $4,000 and for their march. I don't know what it stands for. Museum of Arts in Rockland County. So we need to be aware of these things, you know, to make sure that we get these archives to them so that we're representative there, and they don't get it thrown in trash somewhere. You know, there's a cemetery right outside the, hey Barbara, you're an ex-
You know, there's a cemetery right outside the, hey, Barbara, you're, you're an ex-claborarian there, do you have something?
I have a set of, I was talking about this, I asked some employees, and they are in the library, this wonderful stone, it's in the library, the batteries, Dr. Falk's portrait is still there, and some honorariums of my late neighbors, and this is a town, you didn't have, you have, you had a, I mean, one portrait, they all there.
Okay, I've never...
I asked this week, I just, uh, I'm just checking.
Hey, buddy. Okay, so, do we have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion from Councilman Sheldon, a second. Thornton, all in favor? We are adjourned.